It's six o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's six o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Manitou Springs City Council for November the 18th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Manitou Springs City Council for November the 18th, 2025. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Would the city clerk please call the roll? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
City Council members Drew The Chandler. City Council members Drew The Chandler.
Present. Present.
John Shada. John Shada. Julie Wolf. Julie Wolf.
Here. Here.
Nancy Fortune. Nancy Fortune.
Present. Present.
Michelle Weatherholt. Michelle Weatherholt. Is that excused or no? Is that excused or no?
No, she's not excused. No, she's not excused.
Mayor Pro Tim Natalie Johnson. Mayor Pro Tim Natalie Johnson.
Here. Here.
And Mayor John Graham. And Mayor John Graham.
Present. Thank you. Present. Thank you.
Mayor, with Michelle, she did send us a text saying she's about an hour and a half ago. Mayor, with Michelle, she did send us a text saying she's about an hour and a half ago.
Okay, I haven't seen it. I just checked here a little bit ago. Okay, I haven't seen it. I just checked here a little bit ago. Wait, okay, there it is. Wait, okay, there it is. Okay. Okay. Okay, she's under the weather, so she will be excused. Okay, she's under the weather, so she will be excused. All right then. Okay, next item would be approval of the agenda. All right then. Okay, next item would be approval of the agenda. Council have all had a chance to look over the agenda, so I would seek a motion to accept and approve it. Council have all had a chance to look over the agenda, so I would seek a motion to accept and approve it.
I'll move to approve the agenda. I'll move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Judith. Do I have a second? Thank you, Judith. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Segmented by Counselor Fortune. Segmented by Counselor Fortune. Elena, how do you want us to vote? Electronically? Great. Elena, how do you want us to vote? Electronically? Great. Please vote. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously. Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. Okay, next item is public comment on non-agenda items. Okay, next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This is the portion during the meeting when anyone in the audience is welcome to make This is the portion during the meeting when anyone in the audience is welcome to make a comment about any item that is not on the agenda elsewhere. a comment about any item that is not on the agenda elsewhere. So you have three minutes to do that, and we know we have at least one individual wants to speak. That would be Greg Wellens. So you have three minutes to do that, and we know we have at least one individual wants to speak. That would be Greg Wellens. Greg, could you come forward, sir? Greg, could you come forward, sir? Okay, so first off, of course, you need your name, address, and then you have three minutes. Okay, so first off, of course, you need your name, address, and then you have three minutes. Counsel typically listens during this time, but we don't answer back, so you understand that. Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Counsel typically listens during this time, but we don't answer back, so you understand that. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Greg Wellens from Adventures Southwest, address 3 Sequoia Road, Colorado Springs, Colorado. Greg Wellens from Adventures Southwest, address 3 Sequoia Road, Colorado Springs, Colorado. We're here tonight. I wanted to read a letter into the record to the town council, and I'm joined here. We're here tonight. I wanted to read a letter into the record to the town council, and I'm joined here. Tim Haas is a show of support as well, that those of us who have written this letter tonight extends beyond just those of us who are involved Tim Haas is a show of support as well, that those of us who have written this letter tonight extends beyond just those of us who are involved in the issue two A. So, in the issue two A. So, Mr. Mayor, good to see you again. Been a little while. Mr. Mayor, good to see you again. Been a little while. Dear Manitou Springs City Council, Dear Manitou Springs City Council, now that the campaign season is behind us and Manitou voters have decisively defeated now that the campaign season is behind us and Manitou voters have decisively defeated the proposed amendment amusement tax increase, we believe it is appropriate to provide for the record a specific request the proposed amendment amusement tax increase, we believe it is appropriate to provide for the record a specific request as council begins its deliberations about the city's budgets. as council begins its deliberations about the city's budgets. I'm here before you on behalf of several Manitou business owners, many of whom made up the campaign committee, I'm here before you on behalf of several Manitou business owners, many of whom made up the campaign committee, organized to defeat ballot issue two A. organized to defeat ballot issue two A. To reiterate our suggestion made during the campaign To reiterate our suggestion made during the campaign that the business community and the city council work together on a solution to the city's financial difficulties. that the business community and the city council work together on a solution to the city's financial difficulties. There's no disagreement among us about what makes Manitou unique. There's no disagreement among us about what makes Manitou unique. In particular, our rich history of welcoming visitors from around the globe who come to enjoy our culture, In particular, our rich history of welcoming visitors from around the globe who come to enjoy our culture, hospitality, and outdoor amenities. hospitality, and outdoor amenities. We are privileged to live and work at the base of Pike's Peak, and we are united in the responsibilities that come with maintaining the specialness we enjoy here. We are privileged to live and work at the base of Pike's Peak, and we are united in the responsibilities that come with maintaining the specialness we enjoy here. Every Manitou citizen, regardless of their background, profession, or political leanings, Every Manitou citizen, regardless of their background, profession, or political leanings, is invested in the success of our small town. is invested in the success of our small town. Our specific request is to form a working group of sorts made up of council members, Our specific request is to form a working group of sorts made up of council members, city staff, and representatives of the business community to discuss how we can best work together. city staff, and representatives of the business community to discuss how we can best work together. Our intention is for meaningful dialogue with the council. Our intention is for meaningful dialogue with the council. Our suggestion is quite timely, given recent news reports quoting elected officials on potential future ballot questions. Our suggestion is quite timely, given recent news reports quoting elected officials on potential future ballot questions. Whether it's a budget for a business or for a municipality, we believe that both sides of the ledger, Whether it's a budget for a business or for a municipality, we believe that both sides of the ledger, expenditures, and revenues need equal consideration during financially challenging times. expenditures, and revenues need equal consideration during financially challenging times. I've provided my contact information below and look forward to response. I've provided my contact information below and look forward to response. We sincerely hope that our offer of collaboration is accepted in the same spirit that is offered. We sincerely hope that our offer of collaboration is accepted in the same spirit that is offered. We owe it to the future generations of Manitou to work together today for outcomes that are beneficial to our long-term success, We owe it to the future generations of Manitou to work together today for outcomes that are beneficial to our long-term success, and we stand by ready to help. Thank you for your consideration. and we stand by ready to help. Thank you for your consideration. And it's signed by myself, Gregory Cobble, Ted Johnson, Tim Haas, Lori and Dolores Adams Miller, Rob and Michelle Heffner. And it's signed by myself, Gregory Cobble, Ted Johnson, Tim Haas, Lori and Dolores Adams Miller, Rob and Michelle Heffner. Thank you. Thank you. And we'll submit this to the clerk for the record, right? And we'll submit this to the clerk for the record, right?
Okay, great. Very good. Okay, great. Very good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Tim, did you have anything you want to say? Thank you, Greg. Tim, did you have anything you want to say? Go ahead and let's have your name and address anyway, since you're up here, okay, Tim? Go ahead and let's have your name and address anyway, since you're up here, okay, Tim?
Tim Haas, 3905 Greenside Point, Colorado Springs, Colorado. Tim Haas, 3905 Greenside Point, Colorado Springs, Colorado.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
Yep. Yep.
All right. All right. Do we have anyone else who wants to speak to a non-agenda item tonight? Do we have anyone else who wants to speak to a non-agenda item tonight? Greg, if yeah, you can just go ahead and give that to Elena, please. Greg, if yeah, you can just go ahead and give that to Elena, please. Sorry. Sorry. Ma'am, did you want to speak to? Ma'am, did you want to speak to? Okay. Okay. Well, I'm sorry. Okay, this is for non-agenda items. Well, I'm sorry. Okay, this is for non-agenda items. Can I ask your name? Can I ask your name? Okay, see, this is gonna, it'll be later. The item you want to speak to is H2, so that'll be later on in the meeting. Okay, see, this is gonna, it'll be later. The item you want to speak to is H2, so that'll be later on in the meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so if you could take your seat. Okay, so if you could take your seat. That time will come. That time will come. Okay, so any other public comment on non-agenda items? Okay, so any other public comment on non-agenda items? All right, let's go ahead and move on. The next item is the Police Department Awards. All right, let's go ahead and move on. The next item is the Police Department Awards. Call Commander Corey Savine forward with his officers. Call Commander Corey Savine forward with his officers. Hi. Hi. Commander, you want to grab a microphone there? Commander, you want to grab a microphone there? Can you? Can you?
So we have three of these awards to give out tonight. These individuals were. So we have three of these awards to give out tonight. These individuals were.
Commander, if you could have the mic about three inches from your mouth. Commander, if you could have the mic about three inches from your mouth.
Sure. Sure.
Great, thanks. Great, thanks.
These individuals were recognized by either their supervisors These individuals were recognized by either their supervisors or other city personnel, so we're here to read their, what they wrote up for them and present them with them tonight, okay? or other city personnel, so we're here to read their, what they wrote up for them and present them with them tonight, okay? The first one will be to Ryan Carter. The first one will be to Ryan Carter. She's our Evidence Tech, who's worn many hats this year. This kind of appreciation for one of those hats. She's our Evidence Tech, who's worn many hats this year. This kind of appreciation for one of those hats. When the need arose for public information officer backup, When the need arose for public information officer backup, Ryan selfishly volunteered for this critical role. Ryan selfishly volunteered for this critical role. One that extends far beyond the regular responsibilities. One that extends far beyond the regular responsibilities. Despite the unconventional schedule, the public facing pressure, Despite the unconventional schedule, the public facing pressure, and the need for rapid response during the stressful situation, Ryan was embraced. and the need for rapid response during the stressful situation, Ryan was embraced. Ryan embraced the position with poise and reliability. Ryan embraced the position with poise and reliability. For Ryan's contributions for both the police department and the city's broader communication efforts, I present her with a certificate of appreciation. For Ryan's contributions for both the police department and the city's broader communication efforts, I present her with a certificate of appreciation.
Hey. Hey. My name is Sergeant Leo Strand. I'm going to be recognizing School Resource Officer Gary Johnson My name is Sergeant Leo Strand. I'm going to be recognizing School Resource Officer Gary Johnson for a commander citation. for a commander citation. Officer Johnson consistently displays his professionalism, dedication, and servitude to the students, staff, and parents of Manitou Springs School District. Officer Johnson consistently displays his professionalism, dedication, and servitude to the students, staff, and parents of Manitou Springs School District. From school security staff, he has proven to be an invaluable asset From school security staff, he has proven to be an invaluable asset as he brings years of law enforcement and military experience to the schools. as he brings years of law enforcement and military experience to the schools. Officer Johnson is present at almost every sporting event for the students, Officer Johnson is present at almost every sporting event for the students, sacrificing his own time to ensure the safety of students while showing support for their growth, whether it's academically or personally. sacrificing his own time to ensure the safety of students while showing support for their growth, whether it's academically or personally. It is not uncommon to find Officer Johnson It is not uncommon to find Officer Johnson eating school lunch with students, and in this way, he displays the human side of the badge. eating school lunch with students, and in this way, he displays the human side of the badge. Officer Johnson consistently goes out of his way to support troubled youth within the Manitou Springs School District, Officer Johnson consistently goes out of his way to support troubled youth within the Manitou Springs School District, even visiting with their parents at home to aid not only in their children, but their families. even visiting with their parents at home to aid not only in their children, but their families. In fact, Officer Johnson recently was able to intervene in an instance of self-harm by a student. In fact, Officer Johnson recently was able to intervene in an instance of self-harm by a student. This would not have been possible without the trust that he established between him and the students of the schools. This would not have been possible without the trust that he established between him and the students of the schools. Officer Johnson is what it means to be a community-oriented policeman, as many of us know. Officer Johnson is what it means to be a community-oriented policeman, as many of us know. This has been highlighted by his performance in his new position as School Resource Officer. This has been highlighted by his performance in his new position as School Resource Officer. Congratulations, Gary. Congratulations, Gary.
I'm Corporal Jeffrey Schulke. Tonight be recognizing Officer Michaela Robertson with a chief's commendation. I'm Corporal Jeffrey Schulke. Tonight be recognizing Officer Michaela Robertson with a chief's commendation. I would like to take this opportunity to recognize Officer Robertson's determination and dedication in identifying impaired drivers throughout the city of Manitou Springs. I would like to take this opportunity to recognize Officer Robertson's determination and dedication in identifying impaired drivers throughout the city of Manitou Springs. In 2025, Officer Robertson has made 60 DUI arrests personally, In 2025, Officer Robertson has made 60 DUI arrests personally, with an additional 20 DUI arrests that she made with her trainees as a field training officer. with an additional 20 DUI arrests that she made with her trainees as a field training officer. This number of DUI arrests far exceeds any other officer in the department and makes up more than half of the total DUI arrests for the department for the year. This number of DUI arrests far exceeds any other officer in the department and makes up more than half of the total DUI arrests for the department for the year. This is especially impressive as Officer Robertson is not a specialized traffic or DUI enforcement officer, This is especially impressive as Officer Robertson is not a specialized traffic or DUI enforcement officer, but makes all of these DUI arrests while also juggling her other patrol duties. but makes all of these DUI arrests while also juggling her other patrol duties. Officer Robertson is an excellent role model to her partner and to other newer officers, setting the standard for proactive policing and DUI enforcement. Officer Robertson is an excellent role model to her partner and to other newer officers, setting the standard for proactive policing and DUI enforcement. She has also attempted to instill this passion for proactive policing into all of her trainees. She has also attempted to instill this passion for proactive policing into all of her trainees. I want to take a moment to share my gratitude for how well Officer Robertson conducts herself to make sure the city of Manitou Springs remains safe. I want to take a moment to share my gratitude for how well Officer Robertson conducts herself to make sure the city of Manitou Springs remains safe. Officer Robertson investigated these cases thoroughly and worked countless hours to ensure that the suspects are held accountable. Officer Robertson investigated these cases thoroughly and worked countless hours to ensure that the suspects are held accountable. Can't say how proud I am of Officer Robertson. Can't say how proud I am of Officer Robertson. For all of Officer Robertson's diligence and hard work, she's awarded the chief's commendation. For all of Officer Robertson's diligence and hard work, she's awarded the chief's commendation.
Commander, is that it? Commander, is that it? Okay, just a couple of things. On behalf of council, we all want to thank you for the work that you do. Okay, just a couple of things. On behalf of council, we all want to thank you for the work that you do. We realize that ostensibly your job is law and order, but in Manitou, I think that We realize that ostensibly your job is law and order, but in Manitou, I think that reaches farther and deeper. We expect a sense of community and reaches farther and deeper. We expect a sense of community and by keeping by keeping by keeping people safe and giving them a feeling of sense and security, you do a lot to make Manitou a decent community, a place where we want to live. by keeping people safe and giving them a feeling of sense and security, you do a lot to make Manitou a decent community, a place where we want to live. So you make it home for us. We thank you for that. So you make it home for us. We thank you for that. I'd like council to take a brief recess so we can go and congratulate the officers. I think it'd be nice to shake some hands, and then we'll get back to work. I'd like council to take a brief recess so we can go and congratulate the officers. I think it'd be nice to shake some hands, and then we'll get back to work. Five minutes. Five minutes. Okay, back to work. Next item is the consent calendar. We've got six items on it tonight. First item is presentation of warrants. Second item is consideration of the October 7th, 2025 city council minutes. The third is consider reappointing Corey Satella to the Mobility and Parking Board. The next one is reappointing Carl Stang to the Mobility and Parking Board. The fifth, Bill Kerner, again, Mobility and Parking, and sixth, reappointing Luke Prince to the Mobility and Parking Board. So we've got four reappointments for Mobility and Parking. Counsel, if there's any item that a council member wants to discuss separately, we can take it off. The consent calendar, discuss it separately. If not, I'd look for a motion to accept and approve the consent calendar. Judith?
I'd just like to pull G2, the October 7 minutes from the consent calendar to recuse myself from voting as I was absent for that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? So I'd look for a motion then to approve the consent calendar minus item G2, which we'll consider separately.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. Next, we'll consider approval of the October 7th, 2025 city council minutes. This is a separate item.
I move approval.
Move approval. Okay.
Second.
Okay, and segmented by Counselor Fortune. Let's vote.
Motion carries four. With one abstention, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next, our first business item, H1, consider appointing Avery Tomcik to the Historic Preservation Commission. I believe we have Laura Kinseth here to help with the presentation. Would you like to come forward, ladies?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counselors. I am Laura Kinseth, HPC Chair at 225, or 229 Santa Fe Place. And I am here to introduce Avery Tomcik as a candidate for membership, for regular membership on the Historic Preservation Commission. So she is very accomplished for a young person. She has earned her bachelor's degree in architecture and has been working for an architecture firm in Colorado Springs. So we feel like she has much to offer in the way of those skills and knowledge. So especially in understanding of construction documents, which is very important, new building techniques, and she also has experience assessing existing buildings. So we feel she has much to offer, the commission. And also, and as a lifelong resident of Manitou Springs, she definitely has an interest in and is, would like to help in any way with preservation of buildings and historic character of our neighborhoods. So Vice Chair Matt Rose and I would recommend her for this position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Avery, if you'd like to make comments?
Yeah, she basically explained everything I was going to explain. Like she said, I've lived here my whole life, went to school here. I was an employee.
I'm sorry, can I, we'll get your full name and address here. And then if you could be about three inches from the microphone, that helps.
Avery Tomcik in 301 Sutherland Place, Manitou Springs. And like she said, I've lived here for all my life, and I went to school here and worked here for the last eight years. And I have been very interested in historic preservation since I started school. I took a lot of classes. I went to CU Denver, and they had a lot of classes to offer to kind of get me interested in it. And it got me heavily focused on the idea of placekeeping, and I kind of picked up want to lean towards adaptive reuse in terms of my career. I want to hopefully someday open a firm that utilizes that. Not solely, but tries to focus heavily on it so we can preserve both the culture and our planet as well. And I also hope to kind of bring a new perspective to the Historic Preservation Commission as a younger individual. And I am really passionate about involving the community in historic preservation, so I think me taking that step forward into doing that would also help people feel comfortable doing that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Opened up to questions or comments from council? We have many. Nancy, please?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Sounds good.
I move, and you are incredibly well-qualified for this, so thank you for volunteering for this position. So I move to approve Avery Tomcik to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you.
Do we have a second? Segmented by Counselor Wolf. Any further discussion? Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. Congratulations, Avery.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Next item, H2. This is a discussion regarding complaints concerning Councilmember Shada's alleged conduct. This was a, an item that came up several weeks ago. Initially, it was during council correspondence. Counselor Fortune read a letter asking Counselor Shada to resign from office. Mr. Shada wasn't here. And the direction from council was to go ahead and put this on the agenda for tonight, so we will now discuss that. Counsel has received a number of emails regarding this. I think it's fair to say that some members of the citizenry are frustrated by this. There's the expectations that city council will do something about that, and I think tonight what we're attempting to do will be to address it as best we can. Now, I would like to point out a couple of things as to what council can and can't do. We can discuss it. Counsel, and this comes from the city attorney, city council has no authority to take action or remove or suspend one of its members. There's nothing in the city code establishing a formal censure process for anything but violations of the city council's rules of procedure in chapter 2.08 of the city code. Nothing like Councilmember Shada's alleged actions is covered in that chapter, so the censure process in that chapter does not apply. Nonetheless, council can discuss the matter, and that's what we're doing tonight. We can provide input. But really, the only people with power to remove a city council member are the electors, and that's through the removal process, also known as the recall process. There's no reason to do this, and there's no justification for doing this in executive session. So whereas we'd usually do a personnel matter in executive session, this will have to, this is occurring in public. Those are some of the basic constraints that council lives with, and I ask that the public understand that. So there's a limitation to what council can do. It's been, I think, very clear to a lot of us that that this is not a job that requires good behavior. It's desirable to have it. I think it's a reasonable expectation, but bad behavior on anyone's part is not justification for even disciplinary procedure. With that, I guess I'd like to give Mr. Shada a chance to respond. Mr. Shada, would you like to speak?
I have certainly read everything that's in the packet. And as a human being, I strive to do the very best I can for this community, and I realize there sometimes I do fall short. But I agree with the mayor that people have elected me, and until they remove me from office, I intend on representing the people of Manitou. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, we've had a number of individuals who have had to speak to this. Before I ask for public comment, I'd like to give counsel an opportunity to make brief comments if anyone wants to do so this time. Julie?
Thank you. I'm frankly disappointed that this is on our agenda for tonight. Anyone who follows city council meetings knows that we've had extremely heated discussions during council meetings and work sessions involving anger and yelling and bad behavior, as the mayor has chosen to characterize it, which far exceeds anything that I've read about in our packet. We've had incidents where we've even had the police come and stand in the back of the room in order to make sure that council is protected because there are certain members on this council who have become so angry and yelling and screaming and seeming to lose control and having anger management problems. None of that has ever come before us as an agenda item. come before us as an agenda item. No one has bothered to ask for any sanctions for that kind of behavior that's occurred during our meetings. Rather, we've chosen to move on and do the job of trying our best to improve the situation in the city and to pass policy and budgetary decisions that are in the best interests of our community. When there are two individuals who have an altercation or an argument outside of this council, outside in the community, I believe it is not our business to conduct a witch hunt and to engage in he said, she said, back and forth and criticism like that. And if that were the case, we would have had a lot more of these meetings regarding other incidents. And so I want to go on record of indicating that I think this is an inappropriate use of council's time, and that I do not think it's professional for us to engage in some kind of a witch hunt, going back and forth, trying to verify whose side they agree with, or what was right or wrong. People lose their temper sometimes. The mayor in particular is familiar with temper problems. We've, and managed to conduct ourselves accordingly and to just move on and pass over those incidents. And I don't think this situation even rises to the level of what we've had to experience in this room in very heated discussions. I realize that democracy can be messy. People here are very passionate about our city and wanting to make it as better as we can. And I, I do not believe this is appropriate for us to engage in some kind of a public shaming witch hunt thing.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, let's see, the first speaker, and again, the similar, the same rules will apply as we do during public comment on non-agenda items. So there'll be a three-minute limit. The first speaker will be Farley McDonough. Farley? And again, if, for our normal customer, if you have your name and address to start.
Farley McDonough, 621 Columbia Road. From the Board of Directors of Visit Manitou Springs, we want to reiterate what is already in your packet, but we want it to be read publicly. This is from the board. It has become increasingly clear that Councilman Shada has demonstrated hostility, bias, and a lack of impartiality toward Visit Manitou Springs. His repeated threats and unwillingness to review information with an open and fair mind undermine the integrity of the city's decision-making process. In light of these actions, we respectfully request that Counselor Shada do the right thing and recuse himself from any discussions or votes involving Visit Manitou Springs to ensure fairness, transparency, and public trust in city governance. Should he refuse to recuse himself or step down, we urge the City Council to take appropriate action to uphold these standards and protect the integrity of the governing process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Brenda Gillian.
Hi, I'm Brenda Gillian. I reside at 6 Spencer Avenue, Manitou Springs, 80829. I am self-employed as an owner of The Art of Being Calm, a communications consulting company, and I have known John Shada for nine years, since my landlords at the time asked him to check out a plumbing issue at their home. Our relationship is that of professional colleagues, neighbors, and his close friends. I am aware that Mr. Shada is facing an accusation concerning a conversation in which the other party alleged threatening behavior. Based on my direct observations of his character and conduct over nearly a decade, I am certain he would never physically threaten or harm anyone. While he may on occasion speak with great passion and enthusiasm, he is one of the most peaceful people I have ever met. During our time knowing each other, Mr. Shada has consistently displayed reliability, trustworthiness, and a kind demeanor. Among the many ways he gives to this community, he picks up trash wherever he walks, and he walks a lot. He helps neighbors with nearly any request. He looks out for and assists several elderly citizens in all areas of their lives. He has helped me professionally by coaching me in artificial intelligence tools and personally by helping me with numerous small and large issues. It would take me all night to delineate each one of the times John Shada has helped me. All the while, he has been a tireless- Okay, last. Can you hear me?
I think so.
Okay.
A little bit, yeah, okay, we're back.
Okay, great. All the while, he has been a tireless advocate for Manitou Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Angela Copeland Wilkes, I believe.
Good evening. My name is Angela Copeland Wilks. Thank you all for having me and giving me this time to speak.
Could we have your address too, please?
Absolutely. So I actually reside in Old Colorado City at 1627 West Colorado Avenue. However, I am a business owner here in town at 934 Manitou Avenue at Manitou Winery. So I know that I'm not a familiar face, primarily because I do not live here, but I do own a business here. I've worked in town for about 15 years. Bought my business three years ago. And I wanted to appear to you tonight to appeal to you both as a business owner and a board member of the local chamber. I come to you fully understanding that Mr. Shada cannot be suspended, so I ask for him to resign. To Ms. Wolf's point, though it may be disappointing for the council to hear these things, and even hurtful on a personal level, as I'm sure you all are close, it is embarrassing for businesses in this district to hear and see the things that we have seen, particularly the poor behavior on Mr. Shada's behalf. It's often spread upon social media and documented, unfortunately, and it's gossiped about amongst our friends and neighbors. As a board member for Visit Manitou Springs, due to the hostile conduct that Mr. Shada has taken with our agenda, it has been both publicly and personally displayed. I am aware of numerous instances in which his conduct does not represent our city's ethics on a professional level, nor does he display the morals or the values that we hold so dearly in this community. In the event that Mr. Shada refuses to resign, I ask him to recuse himself from all future chamber decisions and discussions regarding Visit Manitou Springs. I feel it best for Mr. Shada to distance himself so that we may maintain our integrity to keep trying to grow this city and help this city flourish. And lastly, I don't believe that it is in the chamber's best interest or the community's best interest to further support his itinerary or his business. So I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. And next, we have Ron Elgin. Oops, Ron, push the button, the light should go green on you. And then if you could be about three inches from the mic.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I am Ron Elgin. I live at 422 Custer Ave, Colorado Springs, Colorado. Some of you know me from working with me or supporting me in my job here for about three decades as president and race director of the Pike's Peak Marathon. And not within that capacity, but as capacity as a member of the Colorado Springs Park and Rec Advisory Council. I was at a event at the Cog Railway, basically Incline, where we were inaugurating the new exit on the north side of the Incline, where I had an encounter with Mr. Shada. And it would have been just that, except for my involvement in Manitou for many years, my love, my loyalty, and my passion for Manitou Springs, that I was quite taken back by the interaction. I found it to be very unprofessional for a elected official, very demeaning, and also a disrespect to our officials in Colorado Springs. And this has been my only interaction with Mr. Shada, but I do feel that it displays questionable ability to be an official in this capacity. Sure, there is a passion, we all have our passions, but can we control those passions? And I think that's the issue I would advise the council, Mr. Shada, to consider. Is this something, is this the appropriate forum for him to show that passion? And can he properly abide by the expectations of City Council and his position in City Council? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the slips I received and people who wanted to speak on this topic. So I think we'll move along. Julie, you've already spoken, so just a minute. Oh, Sally, did you want to speak? Okay. Sally, if you'll come forward. Sally Fitzgerald.
Hi, my name is Sally Fitzgerald. I live at 143 Deer Path in Manitou Springs. I've lived here for over 40 years. I've known John for over 20 years. And I must say, that I've heard stories tonight, but I must say there's three sides to every story, yours, mine, and what really happened without emotions. I think some of you have seen me on my worst days, and I apologize, but we all have defects, and we all have shortcomings. And last Thanksgiving, it was my first holiday that we had celebrated without our daughter who had passed away. It was John who showed up at my door with flowers. He knew it was my first holiday. My husband and I cried. I want to say this man does have a heart, and he might have a dark side, because I have a very dark side. And thank you for my three minutes.
Okay, thank you, Sally. Is there anyone else who would want to speak? Okay, let's move on then. Counsel, comments? Judith?
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I want to tell you that I personally believe that all elected officials, and I would actually include members who serve on boards, committees, and commissions, as well as city staff, that we hold ourselves to the highest degree of professionalism and stewardship for Manitou Springs. And I especially hold City Council to that high standard, regardless of whether we are wearing our City Council hat or not, because that is what you expect of us. That said, we, this City Council is not here tonight to be judge and jury for alleged incidences. And I will emphasize alleged because, and I can only speak for myself, I was neither present, nor was I a witness personally to any of the events that are being discussed here tonight. And several of these happened several years ago. And I'm not saying they didn't happen, and if they did happen, I certainly don't condone them. But this is inappropriate. It's an inappropriate ask of council to be even in this position. So, you know, one of the things I always do is I ask myself, what part do I play in anything? I always do a post-mortem on my behavior after a city council meeting or in events. And sometimes I need to clean up some behavior, and I need to do that to be a better city council person and a better, a better neighbor and a better resident. And one of the things that I reflected upon is I regret supporting this even being on the count, on the agenda. And I allowed myself to be pressured on the evening that Counselor Fortune read her statement in, in agreeing for it to be read tonight. And I'll tell you what I learned, and this will make me a better council person. I learned that in situations like this, that are, that are not insignificant, and they are important to us, that there is a process to follow, and that we follow that process. And I want to acknowledge our, our city attorney, to which I wish I would have gone to before we even had this on the agenda, to say, please guide us, guide us in this situation on how best to proceed. And it is very clear by the comments that the mayor made tonight and the information in your packet, that there's a clear process. If any of you residents, resident voters have lost confidence in any of us on City Council, don't believe that we are doing our job, or for any reason feel that we should not be sitting up here, you have the right, and I would also say responsibility, to initiate a recall petition, because that is the appropriate process. And so I encourage you to do that if that is, is your desire. I will close by saying there is one thing that I am adamantly opposed to. I am adamantly opposed to anyone, especially a non-resident, non-voter of Manitou, to recommend that anyone on City Council recuse themselves from voting on any budget issue. That smacks to me of special interest, and it all, there's a name for it, it's called lobbying. And I am adamantly opposed to that. And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
I was asked by Isla Quinn to make a statement on her behalf. She wanted to be here this evening, and she is very ill. She wanted me to indicate that she objects to this council making any recommendations or, or asking for someone, especially Counselor Shada, to resign, that she finds him to be an upholding system, a citizen, and that he's been very helpful to her personally and to the city at large in many different situations. And she wanted me to express her support.
Thank you. Natalie?
I agree with a lot of what has been said this evening. It is not our job to be judge or jury in this situation. That being said, I would like to say that I do not condone this type of behavior, and that you are correct. If we do want to move forward with anything as a council, it would be requesting an investigation so that we do remove that allegation piece from the conversation. I don't know if we have support on council to move forward with something like that, but I do believe that is the only option we really have as a council if we want to do anything this evening. And again, I have enjoyed working with Counselor Shada on many things. However, it does hurt me to think that people were hurt in this community through interactions with him, and that is really difficult. through interactions with him, and that is really difficult for me to stomach. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I think everyone on council has seen an undercurrent of discontent at times. And certainly, there have been more than one allegation brought against Counselor Shada. It seems to me that there is a lack of confidence in the city stemming partly from that. Certainly, people have voiced the expectation that council should do something about it. And I think in having shared some of the directions that the city attorney gives us, you can see that we don't have really much in the way of options. Really, we have no options. As Counselor Chandler said, it's really up to the voters, to the electorate. If you, if you don't like it, you're going to have to, it would appear that you're going to have to do it, we do have to do a recall election. And that's a lot of work, and it's also a lot of divisiveness in the community. But let's think about what the community should be like in a few years. I think we want to have confidence in our City Council. We want to have confidence in our community. We had our police officers in here a while ago, and we want to be able to trust them and know that they're protecting the city. And I think that's, similar sentiment trickles down to all of us. We expect each other to be good citizens. And appropriately, we expect council to do the right thing. It's not always an easy job. I get that. And I've seen John Shada do really humane and kind and charitable things. And I've also seen John when he's not been, not been charitable. And frankly, I've been, I've lost it once or twice myself. Some might say more than that, but I apologized, and you'll be rid of me soon enough. Anyway, I think there's a question that comes before us that do the voters, do the citizens at public large have confidence in the city? What are we going to do? Well, we're limited. I think the concept of an investigation is, I think that would be an objective way to take a look at this, bring it back, and be done with it. So I would support the idea of investigation. And I think that's about what we've, what we've got. I have concerns about liability to the city if we don't do something. And again, and we're sort of in this odd damned if you do, damned if you don't situation. The law says City Council can't do anything. But if the City Council doesn't do anything and there's a future incident, is the city going to be liable? That may be a concern. It may be if, if any one of us gets outside of our sphere of activity, we lose our insurance, we lose our governmental immunity, if you will. That can be a problem. So I would, and frankly, I'm leaving. So what I really would want to do is leave this in a better situation for the next council so they can get things done. And God knows, it's going to be a pretty challenging next couple of years. So I think as much, as little discontent, as little discord as possible is very desirable, and to have a cohesive and effective City Council is really what the community should want. So I would, I would support the idea of doing an investigation and being done with this, having it done objectively, giving it to a third party. I don't know if there's any other support for that. I believe Mayor Protem is in favor of that. You could go around the table. Nancy, would you have any interest in an investigation?
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Yes, you would. Judith?
I am opposed to an investigation. To my knowledge, there have never been any legal charges brought against Counselor Shada for any of these incidents. And again, I'm not saying that, that, you know, I know one way or another how, what the outcomes of these incidents were. I do support the citizens of Manitou. If you feel that you want to do this, I support Jeff Parker's recommendation that you have a right and a responsibility to initiate a recall.
Okay, thank you. John and Julie, I think I know how you'd vote, but give you an opportunity. Julie, why don't you go first?
At a time when we have a budget struggle and we're really trying to count our pennies and figure out where we're spending money, I'm appalled to think about spending our taxpayers' money to investigate allegations of incidents that occurred outside of this meeting. I also think that the mayor's comments about the city being liable are unfounded and ridiculous. Certainly, the city attorney can comment on that, but the City Council is not liable for arguments that any of us have outside of this room. If the mayor's beating his wife, if somebody is doing something hostile to another person or accusing the Chamber of Commerce of not running their business very well, that has nothing to do with city liability. So I just think that's a red herring and legally ridiculous. But I am certainly against wasting money on an investigation about something that didn't even happen in this room.
Thank you. John, do you have anything to say?
I guess I would agree with Julie Wolf. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So it looks like we're three to three, three in favor of investigation, three against. There's hardly any point in putting that to a vote, to a formal vote. Unless somebody wants to make a motion just to do it officially, I think we're probably, I think the idea of the investigation is, won't work. I would see a tie vote and therefore a failure. Any other comments? Okay, any other comments in general on this? All right, I think we'll move on to the next topic. Okay, so next item, Mr. Receiver, Act on Council Correspondence. Anybody have anything? Judith?
I just want to thank and acknowledge the Climate Action Work Group for phenomenal potluck. I was so sorry that I was not able to attend because of a family, a couple of family emergencies. But the event was phenomenal, and it was due in large part to the tremendous work of the members of the Climate Action Work Group. And I just wanted to give them kudos for a phenomenal potluck and Greenie Awards event.
Anything else? Julie?
I'm concerned about a safety issue on Lover's Lane. There is a whole row of big concrete blocks to prevent people from falling down the cliff into the creek. And then there's this one big area where there is no concrete block at all. And I've been communicating with Denise about this, and she explained that we can't completely block off that area, if I understood her comments correctly, because of stormwater. But it's dangerous, and I think we need to have something placed there, whether it's blocked off with orange cones and some marking area to keep people away from that area, or whether it's putting, you know, a partial barrier with another concrete block up there that allows water to pass through either side. But it's really dangerous. Have you seen, do you know what I'm talking about, Mayor? You walk down Lover's Lane.
I want that a lot. I'm thinking there's several spots where a good person could stumble in if they're not careful, but...
Yeah, I mean, if you have a drunk person stumbling or a little kid that lets go of mommy's hand for a minute or a bicycle, that, it could be really dangerous. And I, I would like us to take a look at, I mean, I would like us to ask staff to take a look at what we can do to minimize the risk of injury.
Okay, I would mention there's a lot of places in Manitou where it's, you know, there's cliffs and walls and bad stairways and so forth. There's a danger. It's perhaps, I sense staff has already looked at it. And Denise, Denise, do you want to respond to this?
Yeah, we've looked at it. Julie sent me, or Counselor Wolf sent me the information over the weekend. We have looked at it. We can't put something there due to the stormwater. It will change the creek. And so it's been like that for over 10 years. So we'll look at putting a cone there until we get Lover's Lane fixed. It's also, if you go further down east, it's the same thing. There's nothing there. We don't have enough stuff to put everywhere, but we can definitely put a yellow, an orange cone there at this point until we get Lover's Lane completely fixed, so we can do that.
Okay, I guess the question comes up, and I'll leave it to staff is, if we had some sort of like portable chain link fence that we could just install temporarily, that would let water pass through and would hopefully keep a drunk or anybody else from falling over? If we, if we could look at that, and it seems like we had some fencing laying around at one time. I don't know if we rented that or if we have something that we could use and make do. Okay, thank you. Anything else, council? Okay, let's get on with the city administrator's report then.
Just a couple of quick things. One is the Greenie Award was great on Saturday night, and we had two employees that won, Jillian and Tony, for the Canopy Award. So congratulations to them. The Turkey Shoot was also on Friday night, another huge success. And the fire department raised quite a bit of money. I don't know what it was. The Creek Walk ribbon cutting was today, another big success. And then Saturday is the budget meeting, starting at nine until whenever. We don't have an end date. So it starts at 9:00 AM or end time. So we'll start at nine. We'll take lunch 12 to 1:00. And that's the agenda for the day.
Refresh my memory, is it going to be here or up at the?
It's going to be here, yes. Yep, it's a, it's a work session, so of course the public is invited. They won't be able to speak at that one, but they'll be able to speak at the first or second reading as the mayor so chooses. But that will be Saturday. Again, 9:00 AM it starts, lunch 12 to 1:00, and then it will go until council has given us direction.
Okay, and I will mention also, relative to the budget, we will be entertaining the budget on first hearing on December 2nd. So that's two weeks from now. It'll be first reading, and normally we don't take public comment during first reading. We take it at second, and certainly we'll take it at second, which we plan to do on the 11th. That's a Thursday. And we're kind of under a pinch this year to get the budget done. We're required legally to get it to the state by the 15th of December. So doing on Thursday gives staff a little bit more time. So there'll be public comment as usual, second hearing. But when we do the first reading, we will take public comment at that time because we're going to be in a tight, under kind of a tight deadline. And if the public wants to say something, it would be better for us to hear it sooner rather than later. So there'll be two opportunities. But I remember I had several people ask me about the work session on Saturday. You know, certainly the public's welcome to come, but it's not going to be an opportunity to talk. You will have an extra opportunity to talk though on December 2nd, so please be advised of that. Yes, Denise?
I also just want to mention, as a support to the business community, we are going to be giving some discounted rates during parking for Small Business Friday. We'll be giving some discounted rates and then throughout the Christmas holiday, and that's to support the businesses throughout this time.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, so we're going to have a couple of executive sessions. I think we're going to take a break first. Let me go ahead and read the executive session and get a motion to go into executive session first. First item, K1, Executive Session to Determine Positions Relative to Matters That May Be Subject to Negotiations, Develop a Strategy for Negotiations and/or Instruct Negotiators Pursuant to Section 5.1D of the City of Manitou Springs Municipal Charter Concerning a Personnel Matter. And then the second item is an executive session to hold a conference with the city attorney pursuant to Section 5.1C of the City of Manitou Springs City Charter concerning the dissolution of the Manitou Springs Metropolitan District. So we have a personnel matter in the metropolitan district. I'd look for a motion from council to approve going into executive session.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Protem, segmented by Counselor Chandler. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, great, thank you. So we'll adjourn for about 10 or 15 minutes, and then we'll reconvene in executive session. Thank you all.